Seconds, we're live now, you can go on, you can start in 10 seconds.
Let's just call everybody boss, they don't have to call them their name. Hello, boss.
People forget who the boss is.
Yeah, yeah. I always thought you were the boss.
Not me. Bottom of the barrel.
Let's address the boss and that's our public. So, public notice is hereby given due to the novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic and recent executive orders issued by the governor. The town of Isle zoning board of appeals hearing scheduled for Tuesday, February 9th, 2021 at 6:00 PM will be held electronically via Zoom webinar instead of an in-person public hearing will be streamed live over the internet. Dated January 29th, 2021, John M. Lorenzo, chairman. All right, our first application this evening is number 081-21 Saran and Lilo T. Prasad. Permission to leave platform with ramp over 18 inches high, having a front yard of 18 feet instead of permitted encroachment setback of 20 feet. Side yard of three feet instead of the required six feet, Residence B District, North Side of Huron Drive, number seven, 100 feet east of Richland Boulevard, Bay Shore, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Hi.
Hello.
Can you guys see me?
We can.
Okay, Roxanne Tella, Dynamic Expediting Services with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconcombe, New York. And we are here for the platform with ramp in the front yard. It's actually like a front porch with a handicap ramp attached to it. When the, I don't know how long it's been there, when the client purchased the home, it was already there. I know that he is working with the building department to make some repairs to it. But the relief requested is 18 feet instead of the permitted 20 feet and having a side yard of three instead of the six that's required.
And the, the, the three instead of the six is just for the ramp? So the platform really, that corner right there is just for the ramp that comes up on a platform?
Yeah.
Did we have any precedents in the area for that side yard?
No precedent for the side yard.
What's planning's opinion on it?
Um, as long as it's never enclosed, no objections.
Roxanne, are your clients willing to never enclose?
Yeah, that's fine.
All right, does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
We did have a call, the person just wanted to state their concerns that they didn't notice anything in the call, the meeting that has expressed their recent concerns that the property seems to be used as a multifamily. So I explained that the variance was just simply for the ramp and that there was no request to use the property as a multifamily.
Okay. Does anyone else wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Nicola, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Application granted.
Sorry, did you want to put in with the provision ever to be enclosed?
I'm sorry, yes, with the provision to never be enclosed.
All right, next application number 082-21 260 South Gillette LLC and Hatam Chismahashi. Permission to exceed compensating excavation section 68-442A3C. I proposing a surplus of 331 cubic yards of fill on the floodplain. And to leave retaining wall on rear property line not having required setback of four feet, Residence AAA District, Northwest Corner of South Gillette Avenue. Number 260 and Newport Street, Bayport, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Roxanne Tella, Dynamic Expediting with offices at 1040 Terry Road, Ronconcombe, New York. On this application, we've actually been working very closely with engineering. And due to today's hearing, they actually went out and performed another site visit. And there were some additional concerns that were raised at that site visit and I believe a neighbor as well. So I've been dealing with Tanner Gonzalez in engineering and he, what we came up with tonight is if we could request a 30-day adjournment to just iron out some of those concerns and make sure that everyone is happy on this application.
All right, so you look for a 30-day adjournment. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? The board of any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn the application to a date that's convenient for the board and for the applicant.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, do you want a date now, Michelle, or do you want to contact the office?
If possible. If not, then I can always call Mary in the morning.
We can do March 9th, that would be four weeks from tonight, right?
That'd be great.
Okay, now, um, just for the record, the neighbor concern that you spoke of, Roxanne. We, I guess we'll address further at that time, but it was zoomed in here, so. I, I moved them to panelists, but I, I don't think they're there anymore, right? Does anybody see?
I do see them, they're just muted.
John Manley, okay, well. As we know, the neighbor is here with us and watching and we will have some time. If you should want to speak, Mr. Manley, can unmute yourself and tell us something, but, um, you can also contact the office and we'll let you know what, if anything, changes in the application between now and March 9th.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was adjourned.
Well, it is when I stop talking.
Yeah, it, Mr. Manley, it's adjourned, it's just if you want to say anything for the record, or you want to state it back on when they come back here?
Yeah, I'll come back, it's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Next application number 083-21.
Thanks, Roxanne, good night.
Michael F. and Patrice, Patrice Silvestri, excuse me, permission to leave a detached garage 14.2 feet by 21.3 feet. Having a side yard of three feet instead of the required four feet to leave the driveway on the side property line, not having a required setback of four feet. To leave concrete and wall on side property line, not having required six back of, six setback, excuse me, of four feet. And to leave brick area having a side yard of two feet instead of the required four feet, Residence AAA District, West Side of Blake Avenue, number 238. 750 feet south of Lanson Avenue, Bohemia, New York. Thank goodness that's done, I can't make any more mistakes. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
We have Tom Trifaro, the architect on the project, who, it's his bowling night, so we have to be quick.
Thank you, you remembered.
How are you, sir? Name and address to the record, please.
Yes, Tom Trifaro, DTT Designs, 1165 Broadway Avenue, Holbrook, New York, 117.
Great, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you.
All right, say your case.
Okay, yeah, it's a pre-existing condition, the garage has been built for years, he just sided it. Got it all ready and then did the landscape over again. He did a really nice job. If you were able to see the project, you would, you'd really see that he did a great job on it.
So three instead of four feet on the side yard?
Yes, sir.
How long has it been up there?
It looks, it looks old to me. I did the as-built drawings on it, it looks like it's over 20 years old.
And you stayed in the siding, is squeezing it from the three to four?
No, no, that's not the siding, it was probably built that way years ago.
Okay.
Siding didn't help it though, Mr. Trifaro.
No, it didn't help it, you're right.
Trying to lob one up there on you.
Thank you, I appreciate.
Just kidding. To leave a driveway on side property line, not having four feet, it seems like it's, uh, a little bit, not, not the length of the property, so.
Yeah, the neighbors are okay with that, it's, it's, like I said, they did a beautiful, clean job on it.
There says wall on side property line, is that next to the driveway?
No, it's on the right side.
Oh, masonry wall, I got you there.
You know, just a, it's like a curb.
The curb up over there?
Right.
They should put curb then, not a wall. How high is it off the ground?
Uh, I, I can't swear by that, honestly, I really, I really couldn't tell you the truth on that.
Okay.
But I know, and I know it's good, but maintaining the drainage on his own property, which is good.
Okay, leave brick area having side yard two instead of four. Deirdre from planning, any objections?
Uh, no objections, I just had a question about the wall, I was a little confused about where it is as well. Just because it says masonry wall, concrete along here, and this looks like it's off the property line.
And this is gravel behind it.
Here, this kind of square that's going on towards the back, um, northeast corner of the house?
Right.
Yeah, it says gravel behind it too, it almost looks like.
Yeah, it is gravel, there's gravel on the other side.
It's not on the property line.
There was no weeds, there's no weeds growing up there. It is off the property line, though.
Okay, no objections.
Thank you.
So the board, if they grant the application, will just make it clear that they're, they're referring to the, the wall that's indicated on the east side of the house, I guess we'll call it, right, the northeast side of the house?
Yes, northeast, yes.
Not the wall that Deirdre has referred to that's back near the framed shed, which clearly is an encroachment onto the existing property, 2.7 feet.
Right, right.
Okay.
I thought everyone?
You have that, yeah, I got what you're saying. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted.
Thank you, everyone, appreciate it, have a good night.
Have a good night, enjoy bowling.
Thank you, thank you.
All right, next application number 084-21 William G. Pellegrino, permission to erect second-story addition 35.3 feet by 34 feet. Leaving a side yard of 9.1 feet instead of the required 14 feet, Residence A District, West Side of Castle Avenue, number 1180. 422.8 feet south of Sunrise Highway, Bay Shore, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Uh, yes, James Apka from Todd O'Connell Architects.
How are you, sir?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members, how are you tonight?
Doing well, thanks.
Uh, we are here tonight representing Mr. and Mrs. Pellegrino of 1180 Cassell Avenue, Bay Shore. We are proposing to construct a second-floor addition over an existing one-story ranch. The addition will be 35 by 34. Uh, we're here tonight requesting relief from the proposed side yard, this is a Residence A zone where 14 is required. It seems that a couple of the houses in this area have been constructed with less side yard than required of 9.1 feet. We feel that this would be a de minimis request, as we are building straight up and not making the setback any worse. The Pellegrinos are currently expecting to expand their family and they're very excited to get this project underway. So we're hoping for a favorable, favorable decision by the board members today.
Great, Deirdre, any precedent in the area for the side yards?
Lowest precedent I was able to find was 12-foot side yard. Um, but it is in line with the house and I did look on street view a bit and it looks like all the other houses are two stories, this looks like it might be one of the last one-story house in the neighborhood, so no objections.
Good.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Zapka, are you related to us, Sonia Zapka?
I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Nicola, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Case granted, have a good night, sir.
Thank you very much, have a great night.
Two, next application number 085-21 Thomas J. Dinkleman, permission to erect second-story addition 18.4 feet by 33 feet, leaving a side yard of 12.3 feet instead of the required 14 feet. And a floor area ratio of 27.67% instead of permitted 25%, Residence B 278 Cluster District. West Side of San Rafael Avenue, number 83, 93.20 feet north of Live Oak Drive, Holbrook, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes.
Yes. Rich Tripikovsky?
Can you hear him?
I can hear him, I can't see him.
Oh.
There you are, yep, I'm sorry, that's my fault, Mr. Tripikovsky.
That's okay, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Richard Tripikovsky, agent for the applicant, 173 North Main Street, Saville, New York.
How are you tonight, sir?
Good, thank you.
So you have a house that apparently couldn't deserve, it holds a 12, three-side yard, you just going straight up?
Yes, uh, the proposed addition is to create a master bedroom with a full bath deposit. Located at the rear of the home, is in the line with the existing home and creates no further encroachment. Ariel photographs provided show many similar side yards, including second stories. Record shows number 67 San Rafael was approved for a second story with a 12.4 setback and a 28% FAR. The request conforms to the neighborhood and will not have an adverse impact.
Great, and floor area ratio is a little over 25, we see at the 30s, see right in my mail. Deirdre, I'm assuming no objection from planning?
No objections, there's plenty of precedent in the area for the side yard and for the FAR.
Great, does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Mcine, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, have a good night, sir.
Thank you very much, have a good night.
Good night. Next application number 86-21 John and Meredith Allegro, permission to reconstruct and modify roof line, leaving side yard of 13.8 feet instead of the required 14 feet. Residence B District, East Side of Foster Avenue, number 207, 156.87 feet north of River Street in Saville. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
I'm actually here, it's Meredith Allegro, but my architect, Danny Tanzi, would be speaking on our behalf, he should be in the meeting as well.
He is, but he's muted.
Hello, sorry about that.
That's okay.
My apologies.
Good evening, how are you, sir?
Good evening, I'm well, thank you.
Name and address to the record, please.
Danny Tanzi, 146 Foster Avenue, Saville, New York.
Great, uh, so you're looking for a little de minimis relief, 13.8 instead of 14?
Correct. Correct, it's an existing condition, we're just modifying the roof line, maintaining the plate height. But there's some design, there's an addition happening on the other side of the sites that's necessitating a roof change.
All right, that seems de minimis, I'm assuming that planning has no objection to that, uh, size?
No objections, yep, no objections.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Uh, Mr. Sullivan, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, have a good night.
Thank you, have a good night.
Guys, I gotta step away for one second, I'll be right back.
All right, you want us to wait for you to call the next one?
No, it's okay, you can call, I'll be right back.
Okay. Uh, next application number 087-21 Kelly M. and Patricia A. Barnes, permission to leave one-story addition 29.7 feet by 36.3 feet, having a side yard of 11.8 feet. Instead of the required 14 feet, used dwelling for two-family, family use only as per ISO Town Code Section 68-419.1. Residence B District, Northeast corner of East Golf Street, number 91, and Bohemia Parkway, Saville. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Kelly Barnes, the applicant is here. Let's see. Mr. Barnes, you may have to unmute yourself. There we go.
Mr. Barnes, name and address for the record, please. And we can't hear you, nor can we see you. Mr. Barnes, we'll try one more time. All right, while we're waiting for Mr. Barnes, Ms. Ryan, do you wish to be heard on this application?
No, it's just to establish two-family, family use only.
I know, Ms. Ryan, do you wish to be heard on this application?
No objections.
There you go, Ms. Passaro, that's called killing time.
Yeah.
Barnes, are you here now? All right.
He called, he called me before.
All right, does the board have any questions on this? It seems pretty de minimis.
It's the, uh, the, um, the new, the two-family, family use only is medical, I have the letter from the doctor in my hand saying that Mr. Barnes, here he is calling right now, but Mr. Barnes would benefit from living with his son at the subject premises.
All right, very good, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on this application? There being no one, Mr. Wechsler, haven't heard from you in a while, how about a motion?
Sure, Mr. Vice Chairman. I'll make a motion to grant the application and also the two-family, family use only for a period of three years.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, everybody, I just wanted to let you know that Mr. Barnes is on the phone and he heard it and he thanks you.
All right.
Have a good night.
As well, Mr. Chairman, the con is back to you, I'll call the next application, number 88-21 Howard and Daisy Anne Rasmussen, permission to leave roof over second-story deck, having front yard through lot of 23.8 feet. And a shed having a front yard of 16.6 feet instead of the required 25 feet each, Residence B District, West Side of Mayland Drive, number 10. 168.26 feet south of Ellery Street, through lot to Wicks Road, Brentwood, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Howard Rasmussen is registered and I've moved him into the panel.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, yes, this is Howard Rasmussen, 10 Mayland Drive, Brentwood, New York, 11717.
How are you tonight, sir?
I'm doing okay, thank you, yourself?
I'm doing great, thanks. So you have a through lot with a deck a little bit too close and a shed a little too close on your through lot, backs up to Wicks Road?
Yes, it's actually only the one corner that comes in, uh, under the 25 feet.
Yep, yep, understood, Deirdre from planning, I'm assuming on through lot, you guys have no objections to this?
No objections.
Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Nicola, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. Application granted, so have a great night.
Okay, thank you, you too.
Next application number 089-21 Melissa Del Peza, permission used dwelling for two-family, family use only pursuant to ISO Town Code Section 68-419.1, Residence A District. Northeast corner of Callahan Street and Bay Shore Road, Bay Shore, New York. Is anyone here for the applicant?
She's here, she's been waiting patiently. Let's see if we can help her.
Okay. Hello. Hi.
Hi, how are you?
Good, can you see me?
We can see you, yep.
Hi.
Name and address to the record, please.
Melissa Del Peza, 1051 Callahan Street, Bay Shore, New York, 11706.
Great, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you? How's everybody?
Great, great. You seek permission to use two-family, two-family, family use only, age is the criteria?
Yes.
Are there any other things in order?
Everything's in order, it's the applicant's mother, who is 74 years of age.
Yes, my mother.
Great, does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Nicola, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
For a period of?
For a period of three years.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, have a great night.
Thank you so much, guys, enjoy, be well.
You too, take care.
Next application number 90-21. Daniel Brezzo, permission to erect one-story addition 26 feet by 39.5 feet irregular, leaving a side yard of 8.2 feet instead of the required 14 feet. Residence B District, Southeast corner of Eastview Road, number 14, and Roseville Avenue, Ronconcombe, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, I'm here.
Evening. Name and address to the record, please, sir.
So this is Daniel Brezzo, owner of 14 Eastview Road, Ronconcombe, New York, 11779. So I'm representing myself tonight and what I'm proposing is a, an addition to my home that does not meet today's standards, the neighborhood is quite old, built back in the 30s. And the, none of the side yards along the block actually meet the requirements, so we're gonna have a side yard setback of 8.2 instead of the required 14.
What is your home hold now, is it 10.2 or is it 8.2? Because your survey shows narrow towards the rear, I guess the southeastly side showing 8.5, is that the addition or is it where the 8.2 starts?
So, uh, no, so the 8.2 is actually existing already, the rear six feet of the house already has that 8.2 side yard setback. Um, it's a slightly irregular shape down that yard.
Is that a little bump out on your house, it looks like, right?
Yeah, at some point, I believe in the 60s, they enclosed like a back porch, I mean, it's been there for quite some time, the, the foundation uh, looks very similar to the rest of the house, so that is, that's an existing condition. Um, I'm not going to encroach any further along what's already there. So I'm just going to continue along the existing side yard setback.
Mr. Chairman, that I think explains that two-foot difference you were referring to.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's, I was just curious to see if that was already there or not, it didn't, doesn't show that well on the survey.
Yeah, 8.2 is existing, the, the front part of the house is 10.2, but then does actually bump out two feet. But it's been like that for several decades.
Great, appreciate that. Deirdre, any objection from planning, any precedent?
Um, no objections, this area does seem to have a lot of side yards that are very small. Um, the most recent being 11.76, but in 2003, there was also a side yard of two feet. Um, and then in 88, there are side yards of four and five, so.
Great. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Uh, Mr., I don't know, just a Wechsler, a while, we're gonna give Mr. Wechsler a shot, Mr. Wechsler.
Wow, wow.
He's on, Mr. Wechsler.
You're the boss, well, actually, you're not.
I'm not the boss.
I'll make the motion that we grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Application granted, so have a great night, good luck.
Thank you.
Next application number 91-21 Christina Law, permission to leave gazebo 17 feet by 24 feet, having a front yard through lot of 28.2 feet instead of the required 40 feet to relocate shed and patio. The front property line not having a required setback of 40 feet each. And to leave a shed having a side yard of 1.7 feet instead of the required two feet, Residence A District, East Side of Indian Head Drive, number 28. 963.21 feet northeast of Karen Drive, through lot to Old Broadway Avenue, Saville, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, Keith Gurnick, KG Design Studio, 18 Willet Avenue, Saville, New York.
I, I'm sorry, before you begin, does anybody have a survey in their package?
It's attached to the back of that big piece of paper.
All right, thanks, I got it.
I did the same thing, I opened up that 48-foot piece of paper and it got.
It's also, it's also on the construction plans in the corner.
Okay, thank you.
So we, we issued, uh, issued, uh, issued drawings for permit in the end of November or beginning of November, and we got a denial zoning letter on 12-4 where we submitted for the variance on 12-7. But since I've, uh, applied for the variance, I've come to the realization that the zoning code changed on September 15th. And that a 25-foot front yard through lot setback is required on a Residence A. So, um, this should not have been a denial on a setback since the proposed, uh, or existing roofed over patio or gazebo, if you want to call it, has a 29.2-foot setback.
So what's your application?
Well, we're gonna go for a height variance of 11 inches because it's a 14-foot 11 height. And then there's an existing framed shed that was going to be relocated and that's what we're asking for, a two-foot setback off the through lot property, back property line.
Am I, am I missing it? There's no call, no, nothing.
There's no call.
I know, it's, it's all wrong. The denial letter was based on an old survey.
So when you filed, you wrote yourself a new denial and you're not happy with us that we didn't incorporate your new denial into the call of the meeting?
Um, well, yeah, I tried to call up the ZBA a few times since we got the letter.
Yeah, but the letter was already done, so the public notice was out.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure why we, you know, why we're here for a setback.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna move that we adjourn this hearing, we'll give the applicant time to work this out with the building department, get his denial straight. And then when Ms. Passaro deems it in order, he can come back.
I'll second that motion.
What I don't understand is, is that, you know, this, we, we waited two months for something that's incorrect.
But what do you want us to do?
We can't go forward.
They, they have to re, uh,
advertise.
Advertise this, uh, this whole.
Well, since, since you're so perplexed and shaking your head, I'll explain it to you.
No, I understand. It's just, my client doesn't understand.
Well, we'll take severe messages, actions against those who were, made a mistake.
She's with us, she's with us. I've promoted her to panelist as well, so she can hear and see us. So you picked, you, your denial was written on December fourth, eleven days prior to the code amendment. So no, there was no error there. You filed the application on December, you changed your plans. Now, in-
I didn't change any plans.
Wait, 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 sir, you have to let Mary finish.
Okay.
Your plan update, which is right there for the board to see, is indicates twelve-seven, amended for ZBA submission. So twelve-seven, you indicate that there's a height of fourteen-eleven.
Yeah, that's true.
The denial would already be written on twelve-four.
Right.
And you filed here on twelve-nine.
All right, so I have to call up zoning department and, and get another zone on denial?
I mean, it, I don't know why that seems to be unusual, that the zoning-
Okay, the answer is yes.
After writing the zoning denial, you can't write your own zoning denial on an application page.
Okay, next applica-, Mr. Chairman, I made the motion, I believe it's been seconded. Did we vote it?
Yes, I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna adjourn this and you can sit with, go back to the building department, get the correct denial, we can re-advertise it correctly and we'll bring you right back as soon as we can. Does that work?
Okay, thank you.
All right, you have a great day, sir.
Next application, number ninety-two-dash-twenty-one, Moise and Carline Engran. Permission to leave one-story addition sixteen point three feet by twenty-seven point nine irregular with an exterior basement entrance having side yards of eleven point five feet and ten point seven feet instead of required fourteen feet each. Driveway having side yard of one foot and patio having side yard of two point six feet instead of the required four feet each and to leave four-foot fence and driveway sight distance triangle exceeding the maximum height of three feet. Residence B District, south side of East Holly Lane, number sixty-three, five hundred eighty-two point seven-seven feet west of Hawthorne Avenue, Central Islip. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
I've promoted Carline Engran to panelist. Let's see if we can help her, but she is here twice, so let's hope we don't have any-
I only see her once and she needs to unmute herself from my-
She's also on the attendee panel. Let's see, maybe this one will work.
Hello? Hi, good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, how are you?
I am good, thank you. How about you?
Good, name and address to the record, please.
Sure, name is Carline Engran, address is sixty-three East Haley Lane, I say, New York, zip code one-one-seven-two-two.
Great, great. So you're here seeking permission to leave one-story addition with exterior basement entrance, side eleven-five, eleven point five, ten point seven instead of fourteen. Uh, driveway one foot and patio having side yard of two point six instead of four. Um, Deidre from planning, the driveway and patio seems to minimize the addition eleven-five and ten-seven instead of fourteen. Is there precedent in the area? Any objection planning, planning from objection? Any objection from the planning department?
No objections to that part. Those parts, there's a lot precedent for side yards of ten point nine, side yard of eight point four.
Great, and so the issue that I see is the site try, distance triangle exceeding maximum three feet of fence. Am I correct with that?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, we've never, you hear me do this all the time. I don't think we've ever granted any relief in a sight distance triangle.
Exactly. Ms. Engran, do you understand what we're saying? That you have a fence in the sight distance triangle on the edge of your driveway, the nor- I guess the northeastern side of your driveway?
Yes, it's a white fence.
Yeah, so you're in something they call a sight distance triangle, which where we've never granted any relief in the sight distance triangle?
That, that portion would have to come down like a foot, ma'am. You can lower it by-
I can cut it by one foot. Yes, that's fine.
That's fine, okay, so you're, you're willing to come down from four feet to three feet on that?
Yes.
Okay, great. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Nicole, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
Oh, hold on, what about the fence, sight, sight distance triangle?
Oh. What, what are we doing with that?
We're, we're denying that portion.
Oh, motion to grant the application, except for the fence in the sight triangle and to deny that portion of the application.
Action.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Application granted and denied, if you want to call it that, with that portion inside triangle.
Thank you.
All right, have a great night.
You too, thank you.
Take care.
Next application, number ninety-three-dash-twenty-one, Tara A. Owen, twenty-twelve revocable trust. Permission to leave roofed over screen porch, having a rear yard of twelve point four feet instead of the required twenty-five feet. To leave accessory structure eight point five feet by seventeen point two feet, having a rear yard of eight point three feet instead of the required ten feet. And to leave a shed, having a rear yard of three point six feet and side yard of six point six feet instead of the required ten feet each. Residence B double-A district, southwest corner of Birch Walk, number seventy, and central Walk Fair Harbor, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Uh, yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Anthony Shakowski, architect, two fifty-five West Main Street, Bay Shore.
How are you, sir?
Doing fine, thank you.
Great, stage case.
Um, so we have an existing condition with the screen porch and two accessory structures. At one time, I believe there was a, a deck where the screen porch is, and as you can see on the photograph that I have provided, exhibit A, it caught the part of that screen porch that, in, in the photo where the deck was, and they put a roof over that with a number of columns and in between the columns, there's a screened material with a railing, so somebody doesn't go through the screen. So that backs up to a utility path. Uh, there's an eight-foot wide path uh, between my client and the adjacent neighbor. So the existing setback, I believe, is twenty-five feet. But you can see, there's an old survey that I do have, and on that old survey, the, there was a, um, the existing building is not, not within a twenty-five-foot distance, so that exceeded, you know, the, that rear yard setback at, at that time. The second item is the, um-
This old survey you're speaking of?
I have, it shows the deck. It, it was, that I obtained from the town, I guess it dates back to April tenth, nineteen eighty-two. It shows the deck in, in place.
Do we have, do we have that though, or do we have a copy? Did you submit that?
Uh, I did not submit a copy of that, but I obtained a copy of that from the, from the records department.
Okay.
In, in the town. And and then regarding the accessory building, the, where it's referred to as a cottage. Uh, I, on my plan, I referred to accessory structure A. Uh, that structure was also on the, on the plan, and actually, there's a CO, I believe, for that. Uh, what the owner had done was they, uh, they had put in a toilet facilities in that. So a, at the time, on the CO, it says that there's plumbing and accessory building, uh, one washing machine outlet, and they have since, as you can see on my floor plan that I provided, they have, uh, they had put in a water closet and, and a sink, a lav. Uh, there's no shower in that, in that building. And that has a setback of eight point three and eight point four feet from that rear property line. And then the last is the accessory building, the existing structure B. Um, and that's located three point six feet, uh, which exceeds that required setback.
And that's a shed, the framed shed on your survey?
And that's a shed, and you can see that on my submission. That is exhibit, uh, exhibit C. It's the, I have a side elevation of the shed. It's just a small structure with, with two doors, used for storage. It, it's actually almost on, it's on a grade. It's not raised to, uh, uh, you know, the level that the house and the accessory structure are at.
Deidre, any words on planning?
Um, there is precedent for the shed for the rear yard, um, screened porch. I believe there's close precedent, like ten point eight. Um, I think the framed cottage is the only, the other accessory structure, the only thing that was hard to find any precedent for, but it seems small, so no objections.
All right, does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wechsler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, we grant the application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Application granted, have a good night, sir.
Okay, thank you, have a good evening yourself, bye.
All right, the next application. Number zero-nine-four-dash-twenty-one, Robert F. Schaefer, Jr. Permission to leave in-ground pool with water feature, having a side yard of eight point six feet instead of the required ten feet, patio having side yard of three feet and driveway on side property line instead of required four feet each, and shed on side property line not having required setback of two feet. Residence B District, southeast corner of Jefferson Avenue, number seventy, and Cleveland Street, ISOP Terrace, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Hi, do you see me?
How are you, sir?
Hi, how are you?
Name and address.
Jefferson Avenue, ISOP Terrace, New York, one-one-seven-five-two.
Your dad didn't work at the airport, did he?
My mother did.
There you go.
She was a, she was an officer there, she worked for the town.
Very good.
How are you tonight, sir? Everything good?
I'm doing well, everyone staying healthy?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank God. Um, we have a waterfall feature, it seems like just a portion of it's eight-six instead of ten on the back of the pool. Patio and driveway and side property line, doesn't seem like it goes, it's only a small portion of your side property line that it's encroaching on. Um, and a shed not having required two-foot setback there in the southerly corner of the property, small plastic shed. Um, Deidre, I'm assuming planning has no objection to the application?
No objections.
Anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any questions? Mr. Wechsler, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we grant the application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Application granted, sir, have a great night.
Thanks, guys, have a great night.
Two, next application, number zero-nine-five-dash-twenty-one, Gary and Carrie El Galeta. Permission to erect two-story addition and second-story addition, having a side yard of eight point eight instead of required fourteen feet and a floor area ratio of twenty-six point four percent instead of the printed twenty-five percent, Residence B District, east side of Everdale Avenue, number six-twenty-three, eighty-five feet north of Burling Lane, northwest Islip, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, good evening.
Evening.
Gary Galeta, six-twenty-three, Everdale Avenue, West Islip, New York.
Great, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
So you have, um, a house that holds an eight point eight, an eight point nine already, you're looking to go directly over that?
Correct, directly over the existing garage and to bring that garage, uh, the garage door wall flush with the existing house.
Great, and, um, you, you have a little bit of an FAR push, but we see up to thirty percent, so you're well under our threshold. Deidre, any, um, issue from planning with the side yard?
Uh, no, there's a lot of side yard relief in the area, and I found one precedent for eight point six, so no objections.
Great, does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
Uh, John, we did have a neighbor that did want to zoom in, um, but not necessarily be heard. So, um, this is always a little tricky because I don't know if you're, if you want to unmute yourself and be heard, Mr. Reisdorf, or not.
Yes.
There we go.
Okay.
Name and address to the record, please.
Uh, Alan Reisdorf, six-twenty-seven, Everdale Avenue, West Islip.
How are you tonight, sir?
Good, thank you. Um, I didn't have any objection to the work, I just had a question about the scope. Was the addition only gonna be over the garage or was gonna continue over the main part of the house also?
Well, the, the main part of the house shows a two-story dwelling and the garage is a one-story, the-
Yeah.
Him stated that he's just going directly over to a one-story garage, maybe flush.
I, I can see-
That is correct.
I, okay, I can see the confusion because the, and maybe it's just the way the surveyor indicated it. There's a little red dotted line, I don't know if that's a building envelope, but it goes in front of the garage and then it also goes in front of the main house.
Oh, I see that, I see what you're saying.
Yeah, and if you, the style of house is, um, it's kind of like a one and three-quarters, right? The upstairs is not a full two-story right now, it's um, so I, I imagine the ridge line of the house might be changing so that you can get more space upstairs?
Correct, yeah, that's the existing overhang, I believe, what that red dotted line is.
Okay, so is there work going over?
No, none of that's changing. All the work is directly over the existing garage.
Okay, I think that's, that's what was a little confusing, just the way the plot plan was displayed.
Great, sir, is your question answered?
Yes, that's all, my only question, like I said, I had no objection, just wanted to know the scope of work, that was it.
Yep, not a problem. Does anyone else wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Wechsler, I'll take a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the application. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Application granted, have a great night, guys.
Thank you.
Next application, number ninety-six-dash-twenty-one, Danny Edward Haffel and Maureen A. Ibrahim. Co-trustee of the Danny E. Haffel and Teresa V. Haffel Family Trust. Permission to leave a detached garage twenty point two feet by twenty-two point two feet, having a side yard of four point six-five feet instead of required ten feet and having a height of eighteen feet instead of printed fourteen feet, and to leave patio having side yard of one foot instead of the required four feet. Residence A District, west side of Minerva Avenue, number twelve-thirty-eight, six hundred and forty-one point seven-nine feet north of Orinoco Drive, West Islip, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
I am the homeowner.
How are you tonight, sir? Name and address to the record, please.
Doing great. Danny Haffel, uh, and this is, I own two homes. This is my home that I grew up in, that I inherited. Twelve-thirty-eight Minerva Avenue, West Islip, New York, one-one-seven-nine-five. I currently reside in Northport, New York, at fifteen Terry Road.
Great, how are you tonight, sir?
I'm doing great, thank you very much. I'm hoping to make this a short, easy explanation, so what do you want to start with? The patio on the side?
Well, I would start with the garage. The garage seems that you have a four point six-five foot instead of required ten and a height of eighteen-five instead of fourteen, so when was this constructed? It seems on your CO, it says one family dwelling and one car built in garage. I'm not sure if that means detached, that to me does not mean-
So it's, it's a, a one thousand and fifty square foot house, very small, and there is a one-car garage built into the house, so it's a very, very small house, so my father, I'm fifty-four, and I was, I think in elementary school or just beginning at junior high, ordered this two-car garage from Sears. As crazy as it sounds, it came in a box with a set of plans, and my father and all the neighbors all worked in construction in the city, and he built it because he fancied himself, um, a woodsman. He had all sorts of sores, he used to love making furniture, and he just built the garage. There's no plumbing in it, all there is is electric, and I, I know I submitted the electric, uh, CO along with this, so.
Let me ask you a question, really, could interrupt you really quick, sir. Um, it's, it's under five hundred, no, it doesn't need, does it need ten feet on the side yard, man?
Well, that's what's a little confusing, and I'm gonna try to bring up the photo. Deidre, we didn't send you the photo of this?
It says four forty, the, the dimension is four forty-eight point forty-four.
Right, but when I show you the photo, I think we'll understand a little better. I think I am sharing it right now.
Height.
Uh, can everyone see the photo?
Yeah, it's because of the height, right, Ms. Passaro?
Well, it, what it could possibly be is that it's, they're counting the second story in the gross floor area, so therefore the, it's over four hundred and ninety-nine square feet and it would require ten.
There you go.
Is he, can you see the umbrella roof there?
So, sir, you said, you said you submitted it in electrical CO. I'm assuming you mean the underwriter's certificate?
I apologize, yes, underwriters, so this is a completely unfinished garage, no insulation.
And what date was on the underwriter's certificate?
It was done in the past forty-five days.
Oh, okay, I see, so it wasn't done when the garage was built.
Correct, I hired, sorry, I hired Captain Permit, who sent out the engineers and architects drew it all up.
Do we have any proof of when this garage was built, photographs or something, other than what you're telling us?
Um, I'm an Eagle Scout from West Islip, that's all I can tell you, I'm telling you the truth. The neighbor just south of me has a very similar garage because they built them about the exact same time.
I mean, just, so the answer is, no, you don't have anything that you can get your hands on?
So both of my parents have passed away, um, and my sister and I have both owned this house- So both of my parents have passed away, um, and my sister and I have both owned this house in a trust for almost two years now. My sister finally agreed to let us sell it and we just found eight millimeter films, which I was told, can you please convert these? And with COVID, I haven't been able to do that. We're assuming we're gonna be able to find pictures, but
The reason I bring that, the reason that I bring it up is we generally require some proof, not just, I say so, therefore it must be true.
Mr. Wexel, I wonder if um, uh, maybe Mary or Deirdre can uh look back on some aerials and see um, uh, I don't have that access here on Zoom, but I, I don't know if Mary's possibly able to check that out.
I can tell you this much, I do remember when sewers were put in and again, I was I'm gonna say junior high because the sewers were on the block for probably two years, the big pipes, and we played on them as little kids. And at that time, my father said he got a letter from the town stating he was gonna be, need a new survey and he said, he complained that his taxes went up because of this.
Oh, but that, you, you just hit on what I was gonna, Ms. Passera, do you have access to assessor's records perhaps?
Uh, no, I'll, I mean, I'll have the garage, but I won't know what year it went on. I can contact the assessors tomorrow.
Well, no, um, but my point is, if it went on the assessment roll in nineteen eighty, you know it's at least that old. Right?
Right.
You can't assess something that's not there. So, I mean, maybe that helps the gentleman in, in his quest. And sir, I remember a lot of things too, like when they invented fire, so, but that's not.
You may want to, I think, Mr. Chairman, my guess is we're going to end up reserving so we could check out some things. You may want to endeavor to take those old eight millimeters and grab a still to show us.
Get the assessor's record.
Yeah.
I'd feel more comfortable with the assessor's record, to be honest.
I, I would, I would too, and
Because that's dated.
Yeah, exactly.
The, the old aerials aren't clear, I'll say that much, but I, I, I don't see it on the nineteen eighty-four. I do see your neighbor's garage on the nineteen eighty-four to the south.
I, I'm being honest here, my dad did not apply for a CO when he built it.
Well, you know that, we know that, we, we
We just need to establish what year he built it, sir, and through documentary evidence, not just testimony.
Gotcha.
So we, it, it, sir, do you, do you have some time, possibly take a, a small adjournment or maybe reserve and you, you got, you got some time to submit some uh paperwork to the office that we can um look at and possibly you can you know, be producing your testimony here for the years that it was built?
I will try, but let me just give you a quick story and maybe it'll take some pity on me. We've owned this house now for almost two years, been paying taxes on it. Nobody lives in it. It's just sitting there. This garage was built over forty years ago and I'm telling you that is fact. I get it, you need some proof. We actually went to contract on this house and sold it to a young couple, not knowing that there wasn't a CO on this. We assumed there was because my father did everything by the book. We've been under contract since the summer and the, this poor young married couple who were renting, thought that they were gonna close within thirty days, had to end their lease and now they're living at the mother-in-law's house for the past
Sir, but, but, you know, sir, I, I gotta tell you, I, you know, I, I'm, I, I, I'm a little offended, quite frankly, because here we are bending over backwards, telling you with a simple FOIA request, you could get the document you need that will give us what we need to give you a decision. And instead, you know, quite frankly, you could have solved that couple's problem by renting them your house in the meantime and, and then have an abatement of the purchase price. So please, uh, you know, we're trying to help. Give us what we need so that we can help you, all right?
I get it. I don't, I don't understand the first piece that you said to me about
Oh, you know what? Let's, can we move on, Mr. Chairman? We all, we all understand. You know what you need to do. Why don't we move on?
And let it, let, let him just, let him answer, say his last statement about the first portion.
Yeah, no, I apologize. Other than pictures, if I can't get the eight millimeter, what did you say I need to do?
The assessment records.
Go to the assessor's office and
Thank you.
Under the Freedom of Information law, you can get the records of the taxation of this parcel.
And if they assess this building on your property back in the eighties, say, then we have some proof that this building was there and and we can render a decision at that moment. It will help you out.
Okay, what about the second part, the uh, the patio?
The patio seems de minimis. It's very small against the property line. I don't think we have an issue with that at all.
Unfortunately, we can't grant it until we grant every, grant or deny everything, right?
Correct.
Correct.
So if you can, um, would you like a short adjournment or would you like us to reserve decision? You can submit um within the uh rescission period.
You know, I, I, are you asking me if I could produce it tonight? Because as stupid as it sounds, I'm turning my camera. I have um all the books right next to me, all the photos. I can try looking through them while you keep going.
No, we're not gonna keep going much longer.
Okay.
Yeah, so how about um, how about you, we're gonna reserve decision. We have sixty-two days by law. If you can submit some sort of proof, either the assessors or the or the photos um to the office, within that sixty-two days, we can render a decision as quick as possible. How's that?
That sounds great. I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Wexel, I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion that we reserve decision.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have sixty-two days, sir. Get that as quick as you can to us and we'll do our best to get it to you.
Thank you.
All right, you have a great day.
You too.
Next application.
I'm gonna step away for two minutes.
All right, next application number ninety-seven dash twenty-one. Adults and children with learning to developmental disabilities, Inc., permission to erect three one-story additions, having side yard of twenty-three point three feet and twenty-four point three feet instead of the required twenty-five feet each and total side yards of forty-seven point six feet instead of the required sixty feet. Residence AAA District, East side of Harrison Avenue, number twenty-five, two hundred and fifty-one point one feet north of Kings Highway, Hopg, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, hello, can you hear us?
Yes, good evening.
Hi, this is uh, this is Mike Lagnese. I represent uh ACLD. Uh, this is a fusion architecture. We're located at uh One Fairchild Court in Plankview. We're looking to construct
Sir, 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 we need your last name spelled, please.
Oh, L A G N E S T.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
God, stage case.
Uh, we're looking to construct three one-story additions on existing structure. Um, we're proposing to put a six-bedroom group home on Harrison Avenue and uh, in Isle and uh the, the additions encroach on to the two side yards on either side by not, but not any further than the existing house does.
So you, the additions you're putting on, you're saying still hold the same line as the side yards now that are on the
Absolutely.
Most sides?
Yeah.
And it's barely a variance, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, it's barely a variance. I'm, I'm just looking at, I'm sorry about that. I was looking at the uh the paperwork. Um, all right, so you have twenty-three, twenty-four instead of twenty-five. Um, but it, planning, I'm assuming there's no objection?
No objections.
All right, does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
We do. We do have uh one person who has asked to speak.
Yes, hi, this is Edward Cullen. Can you hear me?
Oh, yes, we can. How are you, sir?
Hi, I'm the neighbor uh directly to the north.
Name, name, same and address for the record, sir, if you don't mind.
Sorry. Edward Cullen, thirty-one Harrison Avenue, Hopg, New York, one one seven eight eight. And I have no objection to the uh, the structure. I would like to see what it was gonna look like. I thought maybe we could see a picture. But uh, what is being done for the septic system? We have a very high water table in this area and that's my main concern.
Well, unfortunately, sir, the, we, uh, on the zoning board, I'm sure you're not gonna wanna hear this, but uh, what's in front of us today is just some setbacks for the side yards, um, which is, it's very de minimis. Um, so we don't have any say or, or not experts on the septic system uh with that. So that's not something that we can discuss or, or, or talk about or even approve or disapprove for tonight.
Yeah, the Suffolk County Department of Health can give you information on that, sir.
All right.
Yes.
We do have Health Department approval because we are replacing the sanitary system in the front yard. And we are aware of the high water table, but we have a specially designed system of shallow food to meet the, the requirements of the high water table. And I, I, we already have Health Department approval to do so. We have extensive soil boarding taken on the front lawn.
Well, perhaps you want to reach out to this gentleman and you can provide him with more detailed plans. I'm sure he would appreciate that.
I can do that if you want, sure. We have exterior elevations already drawn of the uh, of the proposed addition.
Great.
And we did have a neighbor um who called in today. Um, I don't see her name in the attendee panel, though I did see her register. So sometimes they come in as a different name if they're rather, borrowing somebody else's device. She explained that she was a little nervous about trying to zoom. So I've just promoted somebody in, taken a stab at it, named Sarah Worgen. Uh, Sarah, you don't happen to be the other neighbor, do you, who called in today? Because I don't recognize your name.
No.
Okay. And back you go to the attendee panel. The other neighbor, uh, we explained
Thank you for your brief stay with us.
The other neighbor is adjacent to the rear, to the east. Michael, just so you know, and um, she just wanted to hear about the application where the additions were going and see if it might impact her. Just for the board's edification, she lives adjacent to the Suffolk Academy of Law.
Would you look at that?
Deirdre, do you have the aerial? There's the aerial. So the subject parcel is, oops, L-shaped. There it is. Thank you, Deirdre. So Mr. Cullen is to the north. Um, the addition, Mr. Cullen, is going to go, it's a one-story addition in line with the house, but it is on your side. Is that correct, Michael?
Yes.
One, one of those, yeah.
Okay, and then um Jerry Sheridan, who contacted the office today, lives there adjacent to the east. As you can see, her house is a distance away. She really just wanted to hear a little bit about the application, but hopefully she's watching us on YouTube.
Great. All right, does anyone else wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Messina, I'll take a motion.
Chairman, I move that we grant the application.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Application granted. Have a great night, sir.
Thank you very much.
Next application number ninety-eight dash twenty-one, J. King Realty, Inc., permission to erect one-story addition forty-eight feet by one hundred fifty-seven point four feet of regular leaving a floor area ratio of forty-two point five percent instead of permitted thirty-five percent. Industrial One District, Northwest corner of Saxon Avenue, number eighty-five and Green Street in Bay Shore. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Yes, we have Joe Clemens, the architect for the project.
Yes, yes, I am here.
And
Evening.
And we also have counsel.
Hi. Hi, good evening, everybody.
Good evening. Uh, whoever's gonna speak first, just name and address for the record, please.
Um, Allison Avila from Gordon and Reese, five hundred Mamaroneck Avenue, suite five oh three, Harrison, New York, one oh five two eight.
Aren't you glad it's a Zoom hearing?
That's, that's the truth.
There, Mr. Judge, it looks like Joseph on the uh, on your screen. Is that, is that your name?
Yeah, it's um, I, 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 I just introduced him. I'm Joseph Clemens from um German and Clemens Architecture.
Okay.
It's on also.
Great, go ahead, stage case.
Um, so I'm here for um the tenant Cisco, who um is a, a tenant eighty-five and eighty-seven Saxon Avenue. Um, and Joseph is here as the architect for the, for the project. Um, so we're looking to increase the existing FAR from point three four eight to point four two five, which is only um approximately seven point seven percent. Uh, and the main purpose is in order to join the two buildings so that it is safer and more sanitary to transport the food from um one building to another.
Are they gonna bring back Kitchen Cabaret? That's my only question.
Unfortunately, at this time, no.
Damn it, I love that place.
A lot of people did.
I'm only
Apparently.
Yeah.
Right.
Deirdre, any um, any uh planning objection?
There is one precedent in the area that was granted an FAR of forty-four point two seven percent. Um, and this does seem kind of minimal. It's not going to a second story or anything like that, so no objections.
Right. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application? Does the board have any further questions? Seems like Mr. Nicole is back. Mr. Nicole, I'll take a motion.
Motion to grant the application.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Kitchen granted. If you guys decide to bring Kitchen Cabaret back, I'll be there.
You'll be the first. Okay, I'll, I'll ask them to do that, that's for sure. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
You have a great night.
Thank you, you too.
Take care.
Bye.
And our final application tonight, Mr. Chairman, number ninety-nine dash twenty-one, BW Development LLC, permission to erect a two-story mini, mini storage warehouse on a basement, having a floor area ratio of one hundred percent instead of permitted sixty-five percent to install two indirectly illuminated facial signs where a maximum of one is permitted. Facial signs having a sign, having sign areas of three hundred and fifty square feet instead of the permitted twelve square feet each and a height of twenty-one point five feet instead of permitted twelve feet and to install a ground sign having a sign area twenty-three square feet instead of permitted twelve square feet. General Service D, GSD District, Southwest corner of Sunrise Highway and Oakdale Bohemia Road, Oakdale, New York. Is there anyone here for the applicant?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair Messina, members of the board. My name is David Leno from the law firm of Rifkin-Radler. I'm here tonight on behalf of North Point Development LLC as contract vendor for BW Development with regard to the proposed development of the property located at the southwest corner of Sunrise Highway Service Road and Oakdale Bohemia Road. Uh, we're here tonight requesting both a, a, a variance for floor area ratio and some related signage variances uh to complete the process. We're hopeful uh for the eventual construction of a mini storage warehouse at the location. Uh, along with me tonight, I have Michael Johnson of North Point Development and I also have Jeffrey Martell from Stonefield Engineering, who is the engineer on the project. Uh, at this time, I would just uh like to uh request that the board um acknowledge that uh, we consulted with planning prior to tonight's hearing. Um, and based on that discussion with the planning department, we would like to amend the request for the relief that we're seeking here tonight. Uh, instead of the three hundred and fifty square feet for the facial signs, we are only going to be asking for two hundred and thirty-three square feet. We're reducing our requests. That was uh, so that the uh, uh, request will be in line with the uh, planning recommendation.
So you said two hundred and sixty square feet?
Uh, thirty-three. Thirty-three, yes, two thirty-three. Sorry about that.
Oh, my bad, I could, sorry.
So we're, we're, we're asking
Don't you need to go somewhere else before you come here for your sign variance?
No, we, we have already, we, we were already before the planning board uh in connection with a referral for a change of zone application. This matter then went before the town board.
Do you have existing covenants?
The covenants were prepared in draft in connection with the
No, 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 existing prior to the
This is a, this is a vacant uh parcel. There were no prior covenants recorded against this property.
I see. I'm sorry. Thank you.
No problem. And then uh, in addition, we agreed with planning's recommendation that we will not seek a uh ground sign that is more than twenty-four square feet. And we will also agree that the property, the building will not have more than two stories above grade, which is as it is presently presented to you.
Mr. Mr. Leno, let's, let's uh, what's amend the application first? You requested amendment to uh uh say facial signs having a sign area of two hundred and thirty-three square feet instead of permitted twelve square feet. To make a motion to amend the call?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Aye. Amendment, okay, I'm sorry, keep going. I just wanted to get the record straight.
Fine. And I, I don't believe there's another amendment needed, but what we're doing is we are agreeing with the planning department's recommendation that the ground sign not exceed twenty-four square feet in area and that the thickness be reduced to twelve inches or less. Now, I don't think that that affects any of the requested variances that we are seeking. I'm just bringing that to the board's attention, that we will agree to that uh, so that we are in compliance with the planning board recommend, uh, the planning department's recommendations.
Okay, um, let's talk about the um do we, do we cross, I'm sorry.
Yeah, let me, let me give you a little bit of the background, if you don't mind, Chairman. I, I, I will try to be brief. I know that you're at the end of a long night. Um, based on the conversation, conversations with planning staff, uh, we've been told that there was interest in the past for this location for a potential gas station or a convenience store. Uh, the, the site is currently a vacant lot. The, this site became particularly desirable because of the fact that the town, it changed the zoning for a portion of this property to General Service D, which uh, which does provide certain FAR benefits with regard to um, uh, a self-story, a self-storage facility. Uh, prior to tonight's meeting, as I mentioned, we were before the planning board twice, where we modified the project to the uh, to what is before you tonight and this board, uh, this uh, project was before the town board. And this board, uh, this uh, project was before the town board for a change of zone application, which was approved. It is our contention that a self-storage warehouse uh, are benign use when it comes to the surrounding area. They are noted for their low traffic generation and do not provide the traffic noises, density, or other common complaints with regard to other types of zoning projects. It should be noted that the only variances that are being sought are in connection with the FAR and the related signage. Uh, the proposed plans are otherwise compliant with the zoning code provision with regard to the height, the setbacks, and for parking.
Right.
Sorry?
Go ahead. Keep going.
Um, while we understand that this board has jurisdiction over the FAR matter, we, we, um, we would like to um, we would like to note that the town board did not have any issues with the proposed FAR of one when the change of zone was approved.
Well, but they made it subject to our approval, right?
Yeah.
Absolutely. And, and I'm not, again, I'm not, Mr. Messina, in no way, shape, or form am I trying to be disrespectful of this board?
No, 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 no. No, I, I, please, I don't take it that way.
Okay. I, I, you, you guys are in control of this element and, and I understand that completely. I'm just giving you, you know, uh, collateral information.
Sure.
Um, it should be noted that the additional FAR that is being sought with regard to this project is a, is below ground, is technically the basement. So if you're, if you're looking at this building from grade level, you're seeing a totally zoning compliant building. The additional FAR is underground.
You're going into the ground in Oakdale?
Well, it's on Sunrise Highway.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, all right.
Yeah, have you, have you done any soil samples on that side or anything? It's past use. God only knows what you're gonna find there.
There, we, our client has done um,
It was a joke. It was
We all grew up in the area. We know what was there.
There you go. Okay. So i- in, in this respect, we should note that the town already does have several mini storage locations that have an FAR of one, albeit they are in different zones, but there will not be a risk of this board creating a potential negative precedent with regard to allowing an FAR of one for this site, should the board decide to grant same. Uh, it should be noted that FAR, uh, you know, FAR is an effective way to reduce density of office and multifamily uses. However, I think that its application to a multi-storage facility may be a little misplaced. We, you know, with regard to this application, the proposed use has already been recognized by the town as a low-traffic generator and an ideal buffer between commercial and residential areas. Uh, in, in our case, the static use of the property as a mini storage warehouse will be better than an office or any of the other proposed uses permitted in the zone. The variances, um, in this case, we believe that while the FAR number may seem high, the potential material impact of the additional FAR is not. We believe that the proposed variances are de minimis and will not have a significant adverse material impact on the balance of the community. Uh, at this time, I would like to just introduce Jeffrey Martel, who will briefly talk about the um, engineering aspects of the FAR and the signage.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, I think Mr. Leno did a nice job of summarizing. I mean, I think um, you know, in terms of the FAR variance, obviously at one point of requests where zero point six five is allowed for the land use, self-storage is generally an anomaly when it comes to civil, environmental, traffic impact. I mean, this particular project would comply with building coverage, landscape coverage, setback, pipe, um, you know, all the traditional area variances. Um, when consider FAR, as was just mentioned, usually it's a measure of intensity. Typically, there's some sort of impact in the neighborhood, traffic, um, or some other type of impact. In, in the case of self-storage or mini, mini warehouse use, we don't see that. It's, it's the lowest traffic generating commercial use allowed in the zone. Um, it's ours or um, you know, not out of character from, from uh, you know, anything else that would be permitted in the zone. So uh, we don't see the FAR itself uh, causing any type of nuisance or negative impact within the neighborhood. And obviously, the wall sign and the ground sign, we saw the recommendations that were in the uh, zoning denial and variance request um, response in terms of what the planning has recommended and the applicant would be agreeable to uh, all the recommendations from planning. So in short, no, we don't, we think it's in, in scale of what was generally permitted in terms of the um, in terms of the intensity of this particular use, in terms of the scale and magnitude of the structure itself, in terms of the visual and the aesthetic of the structure and the wall signs. Um, as was noted, really above ground, it's only a two-story structure that would comply with the building coverage and the setback, so.
Just from my curiosity, the, the, the basement or the underground section that's gonna be stored also?
Correct. Yeah, it's three functional stories, but um, you know, obviously there's, there's a little bit of an economy of scale in terms of what the applicant is looking to do here, but obviously mindful of the building height um, and the, the building coverage parameters. Um, we are seeking the FAR variance, but, but obviously the plan was very intent on complying with all the other area requirements.
Okay, great. Uh, Deirdre from planning, I'm sure you have a few things to say.
Um, So they did, sorry, they did um, lower down the square footage that we agreed upon. Um, because GSD, there's only, they're only allowed a twelve square foot sign. So we were willing to compromise and allow them the same square footage that we would allow in industrial areas. Um, and in some business areas as well. So that's where the two thirty-three came from. It's one per um, foot of the storefront of the facade. So as long as they're doing the two thirty-three, planning is fine with that. Um, as well as, I think it does know that the signs will be also indirectly lit because they are across from residents um, on the north northeast side. So that's something we also wanted to be careful about. And we did request that they don't go higher than uh, two-story. That's kind of why we're okay with it because they kind of are, at least look like they're complying, like they mentioned, um, because they're just the two-story above ground and everything, but we don't want them, at some point later on the site, they fill that in and it can now become a three-story because a hundred percent is allowed. So we kind of want to cap it at the two-story.
Okay. So with all of the um, recommendations, I'm planning you guys are not an objection of it all?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Does anyone wish to be heard in this application?
We did have a adjacent neighbor to the south register and did say she wished to be speak, wished to speak, but I, I don't see her in the panel and
Oh, I have a question, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Sure.
Go ahead. And anyone on the applicant's side can address this. So I, I think somebody made the statement that this wasn't inconsistent uh, in terms of FAR. But two things I would note, the magnitude of the variance is tremendous. And second, while it's not inconsistent perhaps with these facilities, it's not inconsistent when you're in an industrial one zone. But you're not in an industrial one zone. How does this meet the objectives of the ordinance, number one? And number two, how do we get away from the fact that what this appears to be really is a rezoning without doing the change of zone, right? Cause you're getting all the benefits of industrial one, including some on the sign, as Ms. Ryan just said, uh, without changing zone to industrial one.
I think Mr. Messina, maybe it was my statement that, that you were paraphrasing, but I think what I was trying to say is I don't think it was the, the FAR variance request inconsistent with the, with the intensity of uh, you know, the other permitted use could be built on this particular property. So
And when you say intensity, what, what do you mean by that? Do you mean?
I mean visual, I mean impact in the neighborhood, I mean traffic, I mean overall presence, um, you know.
And maybe, and maybe I misunderstood. You know, my, my question still stands, though. You're really doing, it seems, a change of zone without doing a change of zone. You're getting the benefit of a change of zone without making a change of zone application, which I can't imagine would really be granted on Sunrise Highway for industrial.
Yeah, I'd see it slightly different because we're asking for, for an area variance specific to a use. If we were asking for a change of zone, we could potentially put um, a different sized office building or some other type of land use that might carry along with it other impacts to the neighborhood, whether it be traffic or what have you. This is a very specific request to
Right, but you agree that the benefits coming from this request to the applicant are those benefits that would inure to the applicant were it to build this facility in industrial one zoning district, right?
I think that some of the benefits, yeah, some of the benefits are similar, but the way
They're exactly the same. You're getting a hundred percent FAR, getting the sign variance that in terms of the signage that you would get in an industrial, so not, not just some of the very, the same. The significant ones are, right?
But the way we're proceeding though, Mr. Messina, is, is in a manner that is, I think prudent as far as zoning is concerned. I think we're not looking, we're not looking to put an industrial zone next to residential. That was never the intention here.
No, I'm not saying you are. What I'm saying is that this facility only gets that kind of benefit by code as of right in an industrial one zoning district. Do you agree?
If, if I can interject, um,
No, 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 please. If I could just get an answer.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, you're getting the benefits, you are getting the benefits that someone in an industrial zone would get. However, that is coming at a cost. We are, we, we designed the project, revised it multiple times to make the project zoning compliant in every other respect.
You put in mitigation measures is your argument, right?
And, and from outside, yes. And from outside perspective, no, you know, if, if this was a point six five building as opposed to a one, it would look exactly the same. That's the point. Except for the fact that now we have a basement space.
I, I, I get it.
That makes the project viable where otherwise it would not be.
Let me follow up if I can with uh, Mr. Messina's question, cause I'm also stumped by it. Again, why should we grant this other than the fact that you want it? It's, you're seeking all of the benefits of an industrially zoned property when it's not. Why should we grant it? What is the zoning reason for us to grant this other than the fact that you want it?
We're, we're not, we're not seeking all the benefits, we're not seeking all the benefits of an industrially zoned property.
No, but why should we grant it? It's way over what you're entitled to. You're saying, treat me like I'm industrial two, even though I'm not. Wouldn't the proper, wait, 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 wouldn't the proper uh, procedure would be to go get a zoning change? If you want the benefits of a zoning two, seek a zoning change with the town board. You're asking us to, to do it for you, and I don't know the zoning reason why we should. What is the reason that we should?
So and My original question, which was, you know, show us how this is in the spirit of the ordinance, and I think your answer was that uh, from both of you gentlemen, that visually uh, in terms of adverse impacts in every other way, it lives up to the spirit of the ordinance. Is that right?
That's correct. That's correct.
And I, I, I have a question too. What else could you build there? As of right or almost as of right, besides that storage facility?
Uh, I believe, and, and I, I know uh, Ms. Ryan's on the call for a general, a general service D.
Yeah, we could build child daycare, could build general office, we could build adult daycare. We could build a animal hospital, vet type facility, church.
You mentioned a gas station before.
That was just, uh, I was talking about interest in the site previously.
Right.
Did the town
Mr. Martel is saying is that all of these uses are far more intensive.
Correct. Every single one of them.
That's my question. That's my question. I'm just wondering what other uses that would be more intensive than were, just
Every single, every single one of those would generate more traffic.
Yeah, I, I think that's what Mr. Martel was stating, guys, is that the, this, this um, storage facility is gonna, is the least invasive for this area. Um, and it's not an industrial area like industrial one would be. Um, it's GSD, we know that, and it's the least invasive, he believes, in his opinion of uh, of what could be put there.
But don't we have to pay some deference to the town fathers, I guess, and mothers who, when they passed this zoning and zoned this, wanted a certain type of application?
And you're right, but I think the answer to that, their answer anyway, and, and whether or not you agree or we agree, we'll have to talk about, but I, I mean, I think it's, it's a pretty good one, and that is, look, eliminate the basement, that gets us right in the FAR, what you see and what you feel, so to speak, and the impacts are entirely identical to what it is with the basement. Uh, not that I want to make their argument for them, but I, I think it's a really good one, and it's one we should consider um, seriously because, uh, and not dismiss it out of hand the way you and I probably would for almost any other application that's asking for a hundred percent FAR, right?
I agree with
Right, and, and the change of, of, of zone to potentially another zone could open up the door for, you know, any of other potential nuisances. I mean,
If it was granted.
Might not get it then, right? You might not be granted.
Agreed, but, but this, but this maintains, I think
My implication was that it was never, would never be granted by the town.
Got it. But I think this maintains a level of control by keeping, I mean, the land use is allowed within this zone or, or obviously
Sunrise Highway, sure.
Right. I have one more, one more question. Have you guys had any interaction with the, I know that neighborhood pretty well. I live quite close by. Have you had any interaction with the neighbor? Uh, definitely the neighbor right to the south. Have you had any interaction with the neighbors?
Yes, we have. Um, the import of the neighbors was directly taken. Obviously, we've been through uh, two community meetings thus far with um, neighbor input along the way. Um, and we have taken strides uh, to really blend the facades of this building such that they, they fit, you know, you're never gonna match the residential feel a hundred percent, but the facades.
What was the basic interaction with them? Are they, they okay with, from your, from your opinion, are they okay with it or you have problems with them? What do you think?
I think it, I think in general, this property has been vacant for a long time, and, and I think they probably would rather it stay vacant than be developed in any manner. Uh, but with that being said, any of the material comments that were made, um, this, the plans that are before you uh, were modified extensively based on the community opposition or comments that were made at the two planning board hearings.
Yeah.
And I wouldn't speak for the neighbor, but you think about the other permitted land uses, a funeral home, usually PM activity, child daycare, obviously has outdoor activity, has a lot of morning drop-offs, adult daycare is generally benign, vet typically comes with a lot of odor concerns and other, you know, animal-related concerns. Churches obviously have a high activity and certain times of the day, depending on the, the type of faith. So you talk about all these other land use concerns, this is the least
So what, what's your FAR without the base, what's your FAR without the basement? If you know.
Well, one-third of what they're seeking. It's a full
Yeah, it's about, it's pretty much right on.
Yes.
Okay, it's pretty much right on. You know, and mind you, building coverage is allowed at, at forty percent, and we're at thirty-four percent.
Yeah, yeah, we got it.
If I could just go over a couple of things, because um, by way of introduction, those of you who don't know me, I'm the secretary of the board, but I happen to be a land use planner, and I did moderate the uh, change of zone hearing. So I was the, I was present, and that's why I'm a little concerned about the neighbor to the south, April, who did register today and did say she wanted to speak. And Deirdre, if you can just go to the aerial, we can address Mr. Sullivan's question a little bit. So as far as the other permitted uses, um, the board's well aware of the um, like a dangling before their eyes of what the other permitted uses would be as of right. There really wasn't anything as of right here because it was split zone before you went to the town board for your change of zone, right?
Yes, it was, a portion of it was residence AA.
Correct. So the higher use classification applies. So your as-of-right uses were single-family homes and churches and farms and whatnot, but um,
Well, not necessarily, because it was, part of the property was already zoned, general service D. We only added one small sliver to make it a larger general service.
That's an important small sliver because the higher use classification applies. So um, and regarding the other permitted uses being less of an impact, obviously they're less of an impact from a chip generation standpoint. Uh, yes, because everybody knows self-storage is a lower impact, but having an FAR of a hundred percent, if you want to call it, or sixty-six percent with the basement being below level, does afford you the opportunity to have a two hundred and forty-five foot long, long wall. The bulk is there. So there's a visual impact that can't be negated by discussion of other permitted uses.
Yeah, but those are side plan, those are side plans.
They asked a question specifically in uh, questioning what the neighbor might, what the neighbor's concern might be. And I, I, I feel like it's my responsibility to get her into this hearing to speak because I did that for her in the change of zone and, and she's not here. So
Well, but if she's not here, you can't get her in.
Correct, but I, I
So in fairness, that's a little bit on her, right?
Uh, yeah.
And I don't know that it's the job of the board. I mean, we, we should consider everything, and I think your points are excellent, and those are things we have to consider, but I don't know that we should be But I don't know that we should be advocating, couching them in terms of this is what the neighbor would say, and this is what the board needs to consider. Regardless of whose concerns they may be.
Giving you guys some interesting points.
Planning considerations that we should consider, no question.
What do we do? Again, that is an owner, it's used as going to be a 245-foot, those are the numbers, building, a wall. That's huge. I'm sure that's one of the things that the town board considered when they zoned that area. My next question is.
They also approved this at the, you know, with the change of zone here, so they considered it then, too, right?
Yeah, but then they said.
And within the coverage allowed.
Yeah, but then they said.
Yeah, no, I I agree, Mr. Wexler. Like I said, I'm just hashing it out my own.
No, no, we all, here's my next question I have. What do we do? This comes up in, I guess, every case when it's a certain degree of impact. What do we do when the other parcels or other applicants want to do the same thing? Say, hey, there's money to be made in many storages. We want to build them. Can we say no, since we granted?
You're assuming.
Wait, 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 let me just finish. What would be the rationale? How could we say no and not be arbitrary? And then basically, we're changing the code. Why do we want to do that?
You're not, you're not, my response to that would be this. The matter that's before you is the FAR. And the the criteria for an area variance is basically weighing the impact on the community.
No, we know what that is. We know what that is.
So our our position is, and what we've, what we've given to you as far as testimony from our engineer, is that this increase in FAR will not create a material adverse impact on.
Well, that's what you're, I mean, listen, I've, we've had engineers say anything and then, hang on, and then couch it by saying it will be, will increase, will have no material effect. That's.
Okay.
Wait, stop. Stop.
That's interrupting you, Mr. Wexler.
Well, I don't know who it is. Just listen to me. How do we say no to the next applicant that wants the same thing?
If you would, when I, when I, excuse me a second, Mr. Leonard, let me speak one second. As I tried to say before, when I was told to stop, I'm not too sure that in this area, there's much more development than like this to do something like this for Mr. Wexler, so.
And they say we want to build, there's money to be made there. We want to do the same thing.
And so why would, why would we not want to say yes if, in fact, we find ultimately that when weighing all the factors that we must in the ordinance and the statute, excuse me, that there aren't no material adverse impacts and point of fact, this is still in keeping with the spirit of what the town board intended. So, you know, I I, the the answer is if we grant this, we and and in an identical application, because maybe we don't want to deny the identical application.
I think this is things that we're gonna need to discuss. I assume reserve this. I think, but these are things that are gonna need to be resolved when we reserve this.
Yep, but just, just to answer your question, Mr. Wexler, your ability, you have to judge every case on on its merits on its own. So, you know, and I understand that there's a responsibility of the board to take into account precedent and what precedent they set. In this instance, this project, but for the signing, the signage, and but for the FAR is in compliance with parking, setbacks, height, all of the other major area variance criteria that would potentially set us apart from another application. All of those density restricting bulk requirements that your code provides, we are in compliance with. And we modified the plan to make it so, to make this project palatable and to balance the economic interests and the benefit to our client as opposed to the burden on the balance of the community. And it was, it's our, it's our position that based on that, based on our analysis and based on the fact that the town has tried to promote this use by giving bonuses and has allowed FAR of one for this particular type of use, albeit in an industrial zone, that this project as presented fits the spirit of the newly-elected ordinance. And we've worked hard with the planning department, including with the signage that we talked.
All right, you get bonus points for working hard, but let me just follow up with one or two things. A, when you say the town has has worked to promote this in the proper zone, they're not promoting it in outside the zone.
No, they're promoting a bonus for FAR in a general service D. That's why, that's why we get the point six five as opposed to the point four. Yes, I am asking for above that, but it still doesn't take away from the fact that there was a legislative act by the town board promoting this type of use or making it more desirable or getting developers to build this type of use on this type of property.
Understood, understood. Thank you.
One thing, I I just don't see how this application is gonna be particularly unique from any other self-storage application, given that for this industry, maybe more so than any other, FAR is money. The more space they have to build, the more, so obviously, they're all gonna want more space. How how, you you've said a couple of times that this application will not create a negative precedent. Just may, maybe I didn't understand your point previously. How did you get there? What what's your rationale for that?
Well, it may or may not be unique from future applications, but I think what's what's relevant is everything above ground essentially is compliant, the height.
That's a good answer, that the, that the offending portion is below ground. I like that.
No, yeah, that's a, you make the point of the night there, Jeffrey.
All right.
Made that point a few times tonight.
No matter how this comes out, you both did a fabulous job. I don't know that it could have been done better. So well done, gentlemen.
So does anyone wish, God, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna say, coming from Mr. Messina, who beat me up on a CVS application about 15 years ago. I don't even remember that. He taught me very well, so thank you. In deference, you thank you.
It must have been a good one, because he's like, he's held on to that for 15 years.
That's right.
You must have gave him one heck of a beating.
I I honestly don't even remember. Look at that. You've become the master, Mr. Leonard.
And I I know this might be slightly repetitive in a lot of this, the board has to think about future applications, but I I would just submit the statement one more time. Compared to all the permitted land uses, if you had to.
I know, it's not, we got it.
We're on a high point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion. We reserve decision.
Hold on, can we find out if anyone else wants to be heard?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we went through that. I apologize.
Anyone wish to be heard in this application?
I only wish she would show up, but she's not here.
All right, I was trying to see if she showed up. Does the board have any further questions? Mr. Messina, I'll take a motion.
Motion to reserve decision.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
All right, as you know, we have 62 days by law. We'll do the best we can to render a decision as soon as we can.
I appreciate it. Thank you for your time tonight.
Well done, gentlemen. Good night.
Thank you.
I have the board's permission and the applicant's permission. Should I be contacted tomorrow? That's always fun. And should she say she didn't have wifi or something like that? Would it be okay if she submits a post-hearing submission?
Has to be on notice and it has to be within seven days would be my recommendation.
Everyone else?
Agreed.
Yep.
Thank you.
And then Mr. Leonard will have seven days to respond.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that a wrap, Mary?
We just have a couple administrative things.
Okay, very good.
Bye, everybody. That's in the panel. You don't want to do our administrative things. Will you sweep in?
He's frozen, huh?
Will has been helping me in doing such a.
Oh, yeah, I just thought Will was very still. Oh, he smiled.
There we go. She's muted is what he is.
I'm just moving the last people out of the. One more.
Hey, Mary, find out what CVS application that was. I I really.
Years ago, so you were gone, right?
No, I I was, you know, there's been a few of them I've opposed over the years.
Oh, I was thinking maybe.
I just don't remember which one. 15 years ago, I was out.
Just about, right? Oh, six?
Yeah.
Yeah. I was thinking maybe he was trying to do the old as-of-right argument, and you beat him up like I tried to tonight. I can't stand that argument when it's not right. If you're gonna make it, it better be right.
Yeah, no, agreed.
It's not as of right, it's not.
It's not as of right, and don't tell the board because they don't, you guys wouldn't really know, you know?
And by the way, you didn't even have to make that. I mean, you know, it was just unnecessary.
Sorry, I couldn't control myself.
Oh, it's okay. Anyway, what do we got?
We just, Mary circulated a short cheat sheet. I don't know if you guys got it, but they are both in West Islip. And they're perfect for Bill Wexler because they're both basically denials.
Oh, great. I'll make the motion. You made my evening, Mary.
Full favor?
Aye.
Aye. I love the smell of defeat in the evening.
So Natasha, they are 512-20. William and Eugenia Conroy. The application is denied as to the height of the detached garage and granted as to the fence. We got the motion of Mr. Wexler. I think you all were happy to second that.
Second.
Full favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
673-20, Robert and Elizabeth Vanderhoff. Permission to leave carport is denied on motion of Mr. Wexler, seconded.
Second by the, again.
Full favor?
That's it, everyone. We're off next week, right? John is.
I'd make a motion that we adjourn the hearing so that we.
Second.
And the web.
Bye, Tom. I mean, Tom.